This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Then we have Dale and Scott on the line.
Okay, I'd like to open the June 6, 2022, regular council meeting to order. Call to order at 7:00 PM. Would you all rise for the pleasure of leaving?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is standing as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we have one addition to the agenda tonight, and we're going to include that. It is Habitat for Humanity, and that'll be under Correspondence in Letter B. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the one addition of Habitat Humanity tonight?
I'm going to accept the agenda with the addition of Habitat here.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
And seconded by Counselor Norman. Do you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mr. Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Hey, are there any presentations tonight? None. I don't have any mayor's report, but today's kind of a special day. And June 6, 1944.
Good day.
Seventy-eight years ago today. Ste Day. Oh, remember all those people that gave their lives and fight for our freedom, especially in light of our Memorial Day weekend last weekend? And those people that were over there kind of set an example for us today and how we could move forward and without any fear and serve others. So just wanted to recognize D-Day. Seventy-eight years ago. Okay, are there any council committee meeting reports?
No. I have one.
Okay, Counselor Webb?
All right, Public Works Committee met on the 24th last month. They just kind of reviewed what the budget status was, where we were at, the NOT state in Louisiana funding. Everybody's aware of kind of how that's going to play out. We had an election of officers. Sheila Parrott is the secretary. She'd kind of been ad hoc secretary, but we figured we better make it formal. And then Michael Calhoun is the new chair. And they were, I don't know if they were going to submit a formal recommendation to council or not. Some of them were talking about using the Fee and Lo funds for that Maple Street repairs where the sidewalks were really slumped, where the culverts having an issue. I have mixed thoughts on that myself, but anyhow, that was something that they were kind of proposing that we should look at. Or at least flesh out between, you know, have staff kind of give us some guidance, you know, we need to fix the issue before we fix the sidewalk. But somebody said, well, you kind of got a deficient sidewalk, so maybe we need to fix it regardless. All right, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Webb, I just, your first paragraph or your first part of your report, you mentioned Louisiana. I didn't hear what the committee said about Louisiana Avenue.
They were just looking at the funding, you know, kind of firming up what funding we have, just generally talking about it.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it kind of tied in with the other two where we are doing the engineering work. So.
Okay, thank you. Dale?
I did not attend first because it was canceled for me. Lots of scheduling conflicts. We did have one member resign, I believe, so.
Okay.
You know who did, or the sending in the thing?
They sent it to me for us to just step down.
Okay.
Cemetery is this Thursday, so I'll have a report next time.
Okay, thank you, JR. The senior board meeting is this coming Friday, and I have a class at the School Bus Barn for extended training, so unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make that one either. But I'll try to meet with the board chair and others that maybe I could bring back something on the side, so. Okay, are there any topics on the floor tonight?
I have none.
None? Consent agenda for acceptance, cemetery committee minutes for April 2022, cemetery committee meeting minutes for May 2022. Any questions or discussions? Just two meeting minutes.
I don't think so. There was something I found that was a little bit wrong, but I don't remember it now. I'll have to, Stephanie, when I find it again.
Really not, that's there. So our committee meeting minutes to come to you guys, those are just for you saying, I've read them. Okay. Hey, their committee is who approves it and says this is a true reflection of what happened in our meeting.
Right, I was more referring to the council stuff, but I can't remember where it was right now.
Okay.
I think it's just a wording thing.
I thought you were about to say cemetery.
Is there a motion to accept these two meeting minutes?
Motion to accept the cemetery meeting minutes as written for April 1st and 2nd. As paid for April and May of 2022.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Is there a second?
A second.
Counselor, I want to second it. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you for consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for May 2nd, 2022, and city council meeting minutes for 16th, 2022. Any questions, discussions, or corrections? Anyone like to make a motion to accept these two council meeting minutes?
I will make a motion that we accept the council meeting minutes for May 2nd and May 16th, May 23rd.
So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Did you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Any unfinished business tonight? No. New business, Inter-Cultural Society of Renonia Spencer Park. For July request. Found on page 12.
I read that, but I couldn't tell who signed at the bottom.
Stacy.
Like Stacy Pelsters.
How do you get that? Okay. I'm looking.
That looked like an S.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what that was at the bottom, so thanks for helping with that.
And they do have licensed servers for any alcohol that's going to be served. I didn't add that because it kind of has some personal information on it. I didn't want it to be in the packet.
So I think they're going to have an actual vendor, and that person will have to come with the perimeter OLCC.
Isn't the chief usually getting involved if it's alcohol?
Yeah.
They'll have to sign off on that.
Yeah. They'll have to have three food vendors, because that's the requirement with OLCC. You have to have three substantial food vendors to kind of soak up the alcohol.
Well, I'm not sure I really want alcohol involved in a kid's Fourth of July thing. That's just kind of my first thought.
Dale?
Well, apparently, it's a
It's a kind of
I think it's a brewer, like a brewery. It's a kegerator hearse. It's a hearse with taps out of the side of it.
Oh.
Perfect for a batch.
And you plan on parking it where?
Well, so their whole event is in the grandstands football area.
Right.
Their stage is typically backed by the softball fence.
Yeah.
So that would be their perimetered area. Won't be in the skate park part, won't be in the fields, because that's where everyone kind of lays out their blankets. And it can't be kind of where the sequoias are, because that's usually the line for the fire department.
It's just the one day for the four or five hours there?
Yep. I do
9:30 and they shut down.
Tug of war and all that stuff. And so he'll have to be perimetered, so people would access him by, you know, the perimeter.
Are we going to have police force on duty that time?
Yeah, so Sean, so Chief and Sean and I have talked about, you know, requesting assistance like we do for Jamboree since we are so limited in our number, seeing if someone will come hang out for the fourth year.
But one of our people will be here?
Yeah.
Say it's okay.
Yeah. But usually some backup in case something's upset or happens.
And the fire departments there, too.
Yeah, they are. But I mean, he means, I think, for enforcement if the first keg
Right.
went south or something. I don't know.
Funny that she didn't include that in her application.
No, I think she's, I think because he'll come with his own separate application for the same
Oh.
Right, in the same area, but he wasn't ready at the time of this.
They did submit OLCC liquor
Servers.
Servers licenses with this.
So maybe in, you know, maybe in
I think I missed the
Meeting of the 20th, though.
They'll have to, or they won't be able to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. And possible use of the snack shack, so.
Yeah.
And what, are they having to pay fees for this, Joe said, or is this a
Well, typically
See a toll.
On this type of thing, we usually city sponsor it because they don't really have a budget. It's all just to put on activities for the group. So it's like Jamboree, where we don't really charge other than, you know, if they were going to use the space inclusive or excluding people, but this is kind of inviting everyone.
Are we going to be able to get like that small dumpster down there from Waste Management again or something for garbage or?
Yeah, typically, when we have smaller fairs like Salmon Festival or one-day events, we just load the garbage in a pickup and go put it into a franchise dumpster so they can do the same thing. Our city hall ones are never really full because we just throw out such little, so they just haul their garbage somewhere. For the one-day events. For Jamboree, we do take, we do bring in the big ones, but that's three days that
Right. I know we used to have one sitting down there.
We did, but people kept putting home garbage in it, yeah. So we tried to not do that. We did have one there during skate park, but that was kind of our helping them out, skinning the game, because it doesn't cost us anything.
So alcohol allowed in the parks typically?
Yeah, with a light, with a permit.
Okay.
Yeah. So like if you had a wedding some at Hawkins, we've had alcohol out there in Hawkins Park. They just usually have to have servers perimeter that they're going to be allowing people to mingle with it, not the whole area.
Okay.
I think it'll be, I think it's more kitschy and like a draw, but not really a hangout place to get tanked, basically.
And any other discussion or questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept this application tonight?
I'll make the motion that we accept it. Approve the application for Inter-Cultural Society for the standard area use for the Fourth of July bash July 4, 2022, from 5:00 to 9:30 PM.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Second's been made. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, business from the departments, none tonight. Moving right along. Ordances and resolutions. Wow. Correspondence, a letter from Randy Holtz regarding crosswalk. Can be found on page 13, and I believe that's the last page of their packet.
I read it.
Yeah.
And I agree, if we can talk ODOT into it, and probably have to wait till they're coming through town redoing all of the crosswalk stuff, I think we should notify them. There was two young girls, probably 10 or 11, giggling on their phones, diagonally crossing it toward, from the mini mart back toward the park, and they weren't even looking at all. I stopped, and they're still not looking where they're going. So I think you're getting a lot of mini mart cross traffic there. I think Randy's got a good point. I don't know what we do. We put it on ODOT or something?
Yeah, so send an email to my contact at ODOT. The tricky part's going to be that
There's no cross?
We really need one right in the middle of that block. Otherwise, the kids aren't even going to use it.
I was going to say
They're literally crossing at the end of Myers.
Yeah. They're going straight from the big walnut tree to Mini Mart. So I don't know, although Randy made a good point, in banks, there's tons of crosswalks that don't hit an intersection, and that's also Highway 47, so I kind of presented that, and we'll just see what they say. And we could forego one of the other ones. So there's the one just Grant, is it Grant Avenue where brewers live, and that, there's one there. Well, it has a ramp on the old Hell Center side, and it runs straight into a curb on Myers side. So that's not really, and I, you know, only during Jamboree do I really see people using that one. So if they wanted us to get rid of that one and do one there, we could So I just presented the options and what we're looking at doing for the safety of it. Randy would really like it to have like a flashing light, kind of like the schools one, if ODOT would be willing to do that. I don't know that they will.
Safety grant for them or something, huh?
Yeah, so we'll just wait and hear back from them, but I did kind of ask the question.
Want them to come out and look at it physically, or?
Well, I want to talk to them about it first, and then they'll do an onsite. They'll probably just piggyback it when they do the ramps or something for coming out and maybe
If they could come on like a nice day outside of school hours, maybe.
Right. Well, usually, when they're doing the ramps, they're here in the like after lunch to the afternoon checking stuff, so I can just make the case like, come at 3:30, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
How does Mr. Holtz know how we responded? Do you let him know that we sent a letter to ODOT or?
Oh, when he handed it to us, I told him I was doing it. So he knows that I put in an email about it.
Yeah, I definitely support it.
He also
Need.
Yeah, he also handed me his list, and Woak has still not fixed any of the lights. He gave us a list in October of the streetlights that were out that he had noticed. We gave it to ODOT, or I mean to West O, and none of them have been fixed. So we're going to revisit that conversation, too.
Okay.
Yeah, because it looks like to me the sidewalk crossing Mini Mart and where the city has a parking lot would be
Yeah.
The best to catch
The most.
Just typical kids. They're not going to walk into it while they have to, and that would
Yeah.
Put it where it would get used the most without people jaywalking.
Yeah.
That existing crosswalk that's closest to the Rock Creek Bridge, that's it's dark there. There's a blind spot there.
Yeah. Kind of come
You're not paying really close attention, especially to somebody standing on, let's see, I guess the south side of the highway on the Myers Autobody side. And if you don't see them and they walk out, it could be problems.
Yeah. See, I'll bring you guys more information when I get an answer, or yeah, we'll come out, or we won't, or
Okay, Letter B, Habitat for Humanity. And last week, Joe, both Josette and I got emails from
Jennifer.
Anderson. And you have a pass out on it now.
Build request into 16,000 they were talking about?
No, so this is a little bit different. She doesn't put an actual request amount, but she does list that increase to the build as being 19.5. The concern staff has about that is, in the interim rule, we can't find a way to just give it. The other thing is kind of setting a weird precedent that without, it'd be great if we had like a low-income housing program where we put money in this, from the city budget, into it specifically for moving low-income housing forward and applications like this, but we don't. So it's going to look like we just picked one and paid for it in a one-off, and that doesn't sit well with me being able to defend it very well. Because some towns, some communities have, you know, pools of money where they put money into it to participate in this way or to, when one of these Habitat houses comes up, they give a stipend to promote it, you know, or it could be any sweat equity, doesn't have to be Habitat. I know St. Helens, when my husband built Sweat Equities, the city of St. Helens helped, but they had a pool of money that they allocated money to every year, and that's what could be used for it. So it's kind of a
I'm sure she's got money from somebody on this ARPA funds. Can we reach out and find out if St. Helens right here, Fasken I, or somebody that's giving money and how they've done it?
I don't know that Habitat, other than the national version, got, would get money.
I mean, from, directly from small towns, if they donated toward us and how they did it.
Well, that's what I'm telling you. In, when my husband did Sweat Equity with Community Action, there's, different cities do a fund within their budget. So say, it's like street beautification, but say it's low-income housing, and we put $3,000, $3,000, $3,000. So when this kind of ask comes up, the council had a pool of money specifically earmarked for that kind of project and program, but this is going to look like we're paying for per increase and not Milsteins or not whoever else is also building at the same time. That's why I'm, and I told Jennifer this, I said, you can ask, but I'm not a huge
So is there an option of foregoing SDC fees?
There, there is, but then you're doing the same thing. Then what do we say to the next person that comes and says they're building costs, package costs more?
Well, I'm just wondering what the city did when we built the house for Deener.
That was all private.
So
That was private, private funding and the Amish, or actually the Mennonites.
City didn't waive any fees for them?
They did that whole project with private donations and the Mennonites. So it's kind of hard, because whatever we do, we'll kind of set a precedent for the next ask. The only time we ever forgave SDCs was when the school was being built. The council at the time forgave some of those SDCs, but it was more kind of a clerical discussion on how many equivalent dwelling units the school was versus how much they were really going to tax the system with their combined campus when they had all the individual buildings. And so that was kind of a legitimate case at that point. Because they already had buildings that were using the system, and they were just combining them all to one bigger campus.
So what you're saying, basically, there's no way to spend ARPA money on Habitat for Humanity?
Well, there, you could do it. The risk is you're doing a one-off.
Right.
You're picking one winner, and no one else will win in this way. And that's the concern for staff is
I don't think
Is it defensible?
You don't think that it being a nonprofit versus a private individual isn't the one heater?
But it is for a private individual.
It's not like we're giving it to the bigger umbrella, and they're going to use it how they see fit. It's that we know there's one home going in with this one family. That's the tricky part.
And we didn't see anywhere in there where it could be used for that.
Did it just dump straight to them without a whole bunch of hiccups? I also looked up, so there was this group called the Alliance, which was talking about how municipalities can help nonprofits serve their communicate, communities with the ARPA funds, but it's not a one, it's a more giving it to the umbrella and not even if we did that, we would know it was going, does that make sense? It's not like promoting the Columbia and Pacific Food Bank's distribution to our citizens by giving them money to further distribute. It's more one person.
So basically, we should probably set up a fund and have people apply for it.
Well, or just start stockpiling, even if it's a little bit amount every time, and then come up with whatever the policy is going to be. When a Sweat Equity group comes into town, you're willing to give them $5,000 out of that or something. You know, be some sort of program to do it repeatedly with justification, I guess. That would, that's just me.
Well, we only have a certain amount of time to spend ARPA funds, right?
Right, and I think, I was looking at the minutes hat, I think we only have, well, we haven't, we aren't on the second batch yet. But what did it say in the minutes? I just saw that.
It was like
We're hoping to use that for the sidewalks.
For the
We got another batch coming next year, this July or August. I'm thinking if we fool around too long, then they're not going to build too many Habitat for Humanity houses by the time that we're going to be out of ARPA funds, right?
No, they're going to build one.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Is she, is there a timeline on this, or just looking for some help?
No, and the other thing that's hard for me is I get Columbia County is its own Habitat group. But whatever Habitat won't cover, if it's the way all other Sweat Equity programs run, the, they basically try to have the person, the person get, has a mortgage, right? It's not free. But they basically try to move them in with the most equity. What worries me a little bit is Habitat is a huge national organization. And we're going to give $19,000 when that organization's pretty broad and has a lot of funding behind it.
She hasn't asked for 19. She's
No, she just said that's the increase to the build. She didn't really put a request at all in a number.
Right.
Yeah.
I remember when she was here and gave the presentation.
Yeah.
It was a year ago or more. I don't think Counselor Ash or Counselor Norman were involved at the time.
Yeah.
I can't remember
She was, she was requesting a waiving of the SDCs at that
Is that it?
Legal was
Remember that, JR?
Yeah.
Legal was supposed to get back to us on it.
We aren't allowed to, unless it's a legitimate thing like the clerical thing with the school, you're really setting yourself up to be forced to forgive them for others if you do it for one outside of some program or plan or policy. That's kind of the risky thing about ARPA is everyone wants it, but whatever you do, you're going to have to do it over and over again, really.
They know they're putting in sidewalks and curb
I don't know if they've even turned anything in, have they?
They haven't turned anything in.
Get a little surprise there probably too.
But that's everyone.
Yeah.
That's the thing. I understand that it's Habitat for Humanity, but if we make any exceptions for this project and this one person.
I wasn't.
I know, with this one citizen, then everyone else will be coming and the people who've been here constantly crying, saying that it's too expensive.
Yeah.
Will have a case.
Right.
They'll probably put the stuff in instead of pay the fee, I imagine.
That'd be great.
Well, what is the council's wishes for? Both myself and maybe the city administrator respond to, to Jennifer?
Well, it's not real clear what she's asking for, except for she's insinuating that it's my fee twenty thousand more than expected.
Well, she just says any assistance would be appreciated, like anything to help, I guess, also.
Right.
So we could basically explain to her that. We don't, we can't really at this time. Help out with any ARPA funds, I guess.
Well, we can, we just.
We can, but.
Worried about setting a precedent, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, what's stopping that John Smith who walks in the door tomorrow and he sees, reads these minutes from saying. And you're gonna give me nineteen five or you're gonna give me whatever you gave so and so, cause that's really what we're setting up.
Well, I've said it before, that, uh, I still would like to do something for the community based street level. Because that was kind of the. Spirit of this is. The feds were hoping a lot of this would hit street level. We don't have a million counselors and programs to give it to. So. I'm not against doing it. I just don't want to cause a big waterfall, but I, I doubt we'd have a waterfall of Habitat for Humanity people. I guess we could have other nonprofits come in.
Yeah. Community Action Team has the same program. They built houses that this is getting built next to. With that Sweat Equity program.
Uh, federally funded also, just like Habitat or.
Um, they're funded a few different ways, mostly through HUD, Housing and Urban Development.
They haven't broken ground. They haven't got permit. So I would, I'm leaning toward liking to help them, but I wanna see. Probably some move forward to where I know it's gonna happen. Kind of hear what I'm saying. Give us a little more time to see how we could possibly. Set this up where it's not gonna create issues.
Yeah.
And, you know, if they're gonna, if they need a permit and they're breaking ground, I think that would probably be a better time for us to reconsider this again or. A lot of times these situations you could, we could give our funds out and.
I think.
Happen, how are you gonna get your funds back?
Yeah, I think she probably has to figure out what the loan and all of that's gonna be ahead of filing a permit. There's probably a construction loan. Before. So she, she's gonna have to say what, the, what she has the materials and Sweat Equity. And what the construction is gonna cost way ahead of filing for a permit.
I read about them online, like the people that they take over what's, what's left basically and finance it at a cheaper interest rate and stuff. But they still finance it.
Yeah, that is what becomes their mortgage.
And they can sell it, I think after, is it a year or is it two? I think it's like a year.
I don't know.
They can sell it and leave if they.
And whatever Habitat's markup is.
Yeah.
They've got to make their money somehow.
Yeah, they have an administrative fee or something probably. Yeah.
Oh, anyway, I don't know. That's my thought, maybe we're. Like just see them actually get a billing permit, start moving forward, come back, we're still having more funds next year.
They would, that would be in a way.
Not promising.
A donation because in order for them to get the permit, they have to pay all the fees.
Yeah.
Well, they're not asking away fees or they're asking for money to pay fees or that's their.
No, I think they're asking, well, that's what she was originally asking for was saving as a fee. I think what she's saying now is the package for, for the lumber package for all the tresses and everything is. Nineteen thousand five hundred dollars more than it was when they started. What she's saying.
Did they, they. Okay, a family's been selected. I read that.
Yeah, and there was an article in the paper about the family that.
Other was. Second edition?
Yeah, the one that's right out there now.
Just came out.
I haven't read it yet.
Yeah.
So you don't need a motion on this.
Um, it'd be nice to have some sort of formal decision. That way it's in the record.
Okay.
This is what they decided.
Yeah, isn't me making it up. So whatever you want me, my response to be to her, if you guys come up with what you want that response to be.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Webb.
So I would suggest if we were gonna entertain doing something like this, we, we would actually develop a policy. And I kinda agree with staff. If it's just gonna be a one off event. It's really not a policy, you know, you can't set a policy around that. You set a policy and then set a funding source for it, but. We all just sat through the budget and we know where we're at there. So, uh, this ARPA money is gonna be here and gone. So it's, you know, unless the rest of council wanted to set aside a large amount of money to put into a plan. But, uh, I think we know we have needs elsewhere too. So anyhow, I'm just thinking we got it. If we were gonna do something, we really needed to set up the policy and think it through first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel torn because I, I agree with that, but I also do, I guess, feel what JR's saying. I wish there, it was a way. That was a little more straightforward to be able to help. So I don't know that I wanna put it to bed, but I realize that. Maybe the, what she's asking isn't the clear path. Not helpful, I know.
I don't see where the city's got the extra money to throw at, to be honest with you. I would say we try to get together and maybe help put some time in to get it accomplished.
Right. I mean, we could all volunteer to.
Yes.
Build it. We've done that.
Well, the budget has nothing to do with ARPA. There's no ARPA money in the budget, right? Not next year's ARPA.
No, but you have a few pretty large projects coming down that we don't really know. What those will flush out, what the economy will do to those being Louisiana.
Right, I understand that.
And, and then whatever skin in the game we're gonna need for the construction and fix of the springboard. Project or lining the manholes that are leaking in the water table. That's kind of an unknown because the vacuum testing hasn't been completed. So there's unknowns that it could be all that money is easily used up in the city's infrastructure projects that make it better for everyone. For the next fifteen years. Could be that there's. Flex in that and there is extra money. We won't know until we kind of get into those. If that other money will suffice or not. So I could just say at this time, we're.
She's the local chapter for Habitat. So where's she getting her funding then? If it's not coming from the national?
It is. It is coming from the national Habitat, the, to the Columbia County chapter.
She hasn't been hitting up these other areas for ARPA money?
You mean for her houses in, in those towns? I don't know what she's done.
Well, or just all of them, just for, you know, like Latham come up and got some money.
Oh.
Supposed to help.
As an organization, I don't think she did. I think she's, she came specifically to ours because they have a project here. I don't think she went to the other towns and just asked for funding for Columbia County Habitat.
I'd be curious if maybe you could ask her, cause I'd be curious at how they did it, if they did help her with some ARPA funds.
I can ask my people too.
Yeah, I can ask if she asked or received funds from ARPA, from other jurisdictions. I don't believe she did, but.
I kinda had that feeling when she was here last time that she was making the circuit, but maybe I was wrong.
So I'm gonna ask the council for a general consensus, uh, tonight and I'm gonna start it off. My general consensus. My feeling is that unfortunately, at, at this time, uh, the city of Brunnonia cannot help. Her project with Habitat. For Humanity for the, uh, building site here in Brunnonia. So I'm gonna, that's gonna be my, my take on it.
My take is I'd like to get a little more information on it and I'd like to make sure the project's moving forward with a building permit. And I, I would like to help them out, even if it's only. A portion of that, I'd like somehow to help them out with something out of these ARPA funds.
I'm, uh, I'm not for it. I think it's kind of the sticky situation that would. Take a little more, a lot of more lay, uh, movement on our end to really flesh out and make it fair, equitable. And I think like, again, that, that we'd be so limited on funds. It's, it's just a one offs.
Yeah, I guess I feel pretty tied. I feel. The current ask doesn't feel like something we can do. But I would like, I guess, maybe to think on it or try to get some information to bring back.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you from here.
Um, I said, I would like us to keep thinking on it or try to get some information to bring back.
Okay.
I don't really wanna fully put it to bed, I guess.
And you pretty well said what you want to say.
Yeah, and I'm maybe behind what you said, Rick, but like, if they come up with more details. Maybe we can find a way we can help, but right now.
Right.
Our hands are tied.
Yeah, something that would make a more unique. Ask, I guess.
I think we have a general consensus then.
Okay.
Hey, city administrator report.
Okay, so the transfer switch test is going to happen Monday, June thirteenth. Um, like I said before the meeting started, they'll do an hour and a half running everything in the system. On the generator and then they'll do a two hour following that. They'll switches back to the glow of power. And do a two hour load test with a thing they hook to it outside. Um, so we're excited about that. It'll be ready to go. Um, the CDBG was submitted on the thirty first of May. We'll know sometime in late summer if we're awarded. For the new freezers and the purchasing of the protein, shelf stable protein, some personal care items. Um, so yeah, that's all submitted and all the documents are there, so fingers crossed we get it. Skate park, I received an update from Dawn Rose who told me that now the polls are slated to arrive mid-June. Was mid-May, now it's mid-June. So fingers crossed, we'll have a lit skate park by fourth of July. Just seems like everything stalled. Um, the cemetery, the Memorial Day ceremony was smaller than usual in length and attendance. Uh, we'd like to thank JR Allen for welcoming the guests and leading us through the pledge. Thank you to Pastor Sam Huff for opening and closing prayers. And to Damian Cox for his Memorial Day address from the American Legion and to Tommy Sherman for being our sound guy. Um, we had a lot of discussions up there, committee members and just citizens and the Legion members. About things we can do to have them, local Legion become more a part of it and do the gun salute. Also had cemetery committee members that are interested in getting us back on the flyover, um, map. So they're looking into that, um, because you can just get them to do the flyover over your area at certain times. But you have to get into the program. And we did have that in the past, but it just fell off because there's. Not enough people, um, handling the different elements. But it looked great and it was beautiful. We got the flags down on Wednesday, um, with. A three person crew and then my children learned how to fold the American flag, thirty four of them. So it was great.
I thought it was.
They were like, seriously? And I'm like, we're doing it. Um, so street trees, we haven't had any movement. That kind of was on the list and then kind of fell, just stalled from council kind of determining. We're getting more information from if they would be willing to do the open, whole open bank thing, but we haven't got that information back yet.
Katie still hasn't got back with you?
No, so I don't know if she's short timer in it or what. And the OPRD planning grant, uh, Kim Tierney and I finished that up and turned that in. We'll know mid-August at the latest. If we're funded for the lake campground, um, planning grant.
Was he asked? How much?
Ah, JR, why didn't you call me ahead of time? I'm trying to think. I wanna say the max, oh, I'd have, I'll have to check my email and tell you. I think we asked for the max, which I wanna say was forty thousand. And dog water is still, we're still waiting on the dog park water. The guys have just been running around. We had a leak on Heather. It's, the ditch is there, it's barricaded, but we need to get the water in and the dog park water. However, they are getting a stick library or a stick checkout kiosk. Which was donated in this cute little basically covered. Display with pegs on it where they put sticks, different sticks. And you can just take a stick for your dog and chuck it. They're gonna refill it. They have this whole program to refill the stick library. And so.
Charlie will bring what? About four inches around?
Right.
Try and go through a door.
Right, try and hit you in the back of the knee with it. Um, so yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be going in soon and it looks great. So it'll be cute addition out there. Um, and then my daughter's graduating from high school, so I am out Wednesday through Friday to try and finish getting our house ready. For a get together with all of the peeps. Do you guys have any questions for me?
JR.
You ever get back from Jeff on that water tank deal?
Yeah, so, um, they haven't been dive inspected in a few years. He did have Jonathan go up there and fix the grout that you saw. That's just grout in there. So he cleaned it up and he re-grouted it. Um, but we talked about getting up back on the divers' rotation.
Yeah, what was the normal rotation? That's what I.
Well, they didn't really have one unless there was like a loss, right? They're pumping it up there. It's tracked in the pumps. They can see what's getting sold billable. So unless there's a huge loss where the plant's running for hours on end, then that's what triggers them going and looking for that.
Wonder if they poke a stick down there and find out there's six inches of goo at the bottom or something, you know?
Yeah, the last time he said when the diver went in, there was nothing. It was just water because. I mean, there's not a ton of, I get what you're saying and that's why Jeff's like, oh, the grout. And I said, yeah, JR said he could see it from above and he's, could see the grout was. There was leaves and debris and he's like, okay, well, we can re-go do the grout, but there's not really a way for it to get in other.
You know, birds sit there and then rain and.
Yeah, any sort of filtering in.
Forty-five degree angle on those panels and they put some grout in there years ago and it's all popping out.
Yeah, so he did, had Jonathan do that. And then we do, we have to test our water here. They do water testing all the time to see if anything, any contaminants are in there or anything, so. But I'll get, figure out what that kind of probably isn't in our budget for the cost of it. But he said it was pretty expensive to get a diver in there because there, it's confined space and all these things, so.
And then also there's some kids up there, I think, uh, chopping cedar. It looked like they had kind of did do a big bonfire. But it never got lit. Over there where those big round blocks were and they moved them out and chopped a bunch of cedar, cedar kindling and.
Oh, bonfire. We'll have to check that out.
Wasn't a bonfire yet, but.
Yeah. Bonfire.
Up above the, uh.
Cemetery.
Water tank.
Oh.
Out of that, across in the water tank, there's some spools of cables and some.
Oh, that's from Blue Mountain. That's still left there?
Someone brought the cedar up here though, I think, and split it like. Someone brought the cedar up here though, I think, and split it like they're gonna build a fire.
Weird, okay.
We should just take the cedar away.
Yeah, we should probably just get all of it out of there.
Looks like somebody was gonna do something and change their mind maybe or.
Yikes, that's not good. Okay.
And then the Weed Avenue project here, we, I know the city said had some swells we had to do. Are we done with that or?
Yeah, so the swells in, the one little swell's got growing meat over it because that's the design. And then I believe Jonesport's finishing the curb next week. And then I believe they figured out or.
They're finishing up the bids right now.
Yeah, we had one que, we had two different ways they were gonna do it. We wanted to offer to the other one that he could also do it that way because the engineer said it met the requirement and clarify his bid and then they'll pick the bid.
Okay, and the concrete work up here, the bump out, is that gonna start soon or?
Yeah, so we got the engineering on that and Angie told Parker ASAP, get it done, so.
And then have you had time to look at the skate park where people congregate for benches or?
No, so we put the two picnic tables there. We're kind of noticing the areas they're currently standing, we could put a bench there.
Sitting in the bowl.
Well, or, or they're just standing right on the edge of it and that's just gonna become another element of grinding if we put it that close. If we put them where people are standing, they'll just jump up on them and grind on the bench. So we haven't figured it out yet.
And the drinking fountain at the lake still doesn't work. Is it broken?
The, which one?
Soon as you pull.
Oh, the one by the bathrooms? It shouldn't be. I can send them and check that out.
The other ones on across or around the lake on the.
Yeah, I had, I had that one.
I'm just curious if it is broken or something.
I don't think it is, but I thought they turned it on. So maybe somebody, maybe they're, I'll have to check and see.
Maybe it's on now, but the last time I tried it, there's still nothing there.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Josette, I want to first talk about the very positive things about downtown corridor and the beautification and the flowers and the, the garbage can receptacle covers and everything. But I also want to talk about a lot of weeds coming up. And if you, I've noticed them lately in front of the Pelster Building. And that's our property. I mean.
It's theirs to maintain.
It's theirs to maintain and there's weeds galore on the light poles and it just looks awful.
Yeah.
Talking about having it sprayed.
Okay.
Usually the city staff will go down at least once a year due to the planter strip and the curbs. It'll have to get that sprayed. And he actually picked up all the materials for that on Friday.
Oh, great.
They are out of Rockman Bros. spray and painting.
Yeah.
That'll help.
Get pulled out before January or something.
Well, and then like on our properties, Mitch weed whacked the entire library and just swept it up.
Yeah.
So that's another option. And most of the city properties, we maintain them to try and show people like this is how it should be. But yeah, there's some of them that, there's more green down here than there is on top of my garbage can.
Exactly. Mitch doesn't like it.
Yeah, yeah, we, somehow, I don't know how we get it out to them to take care of those.
We could send them a notice. It's usually not received, but I'm like, to me, that just
Well, I mean.
people in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're getting to double standards.
Oh, no. I'm happy to send, I'm happy to send them a notice. I'm just saying that they're gonna be barking about it potentially to you guys.
Yeah, but they're, a homeowner on one of the side streets gets.
That's true.
Gets it.
Yeah.
Get it on Main Street.
Yeah, we can get to put them, we can just go and take a picture and send a friendly reminder. Now that it's growing season, you're responsible to keep that from having.
Yeah, the cities invest in time, energy
Yeah.
and funds to help the downtown corridor and that's helping the businesses as well.
And we'll probably, that would work too, because then we could give them like a little bit of a, we're gonna be in your area doing stuff.
Right.
We're helping you, but you gotta do it yourself too. The worst one I saw, which I didn't notice it until, was the vacant US Bank building. I'm planting stuff there and I'm looking around like, what the heck? The stuff's this tall around the light pole there.
They had to point in the bank now, is it?
Not right now.
Recently sold, so.
Yeah.
Should be made again.
Hopefully.
Sold it up. What are we gonna get a group of now?
Maybe.
One can help.
I wanted to win the lottery and make it into a really nice Northwest cuisine restaurant, but not in the cards.
Do you know what he's gonna do with it?
Not yet, we will.
I see a grant over there though.
It'd be cool, it'd be cool as an old, like, as a cool, like, not fancy, but more formal restaurant. It's like steak, like Lou's Steak, Fake Potatoes.
I'd like that.
Halibut, salmon would be good.
Kind of the mid minimum speedo.
Yeah.
I heard a rumor, I don't know if it's true, that the subway might be changing.
I think tomorrow's their last.
Tomorrow's their last day.
Oh, wow.
The rumor mill says.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know for sure, but that's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions there? Yeah, go ahead Dale.
I want to comment on the reader board. I think it looks really great. It's gonna be a great asset to the community. Whoever's programming it, I think they're starting to catch on to the contrasting colors to make it pop, starting to look pretty good.
Thanks Dale.
Yeah, hey. I had an individual talk to me about the Stony Point intersection and I shouldn't probably looked at my city map to see which side the city limits are, but that is a dangerous intersection in there. This individual said he's been almost hit three times.
Stony Point in Kezey?
Yes.
Yeah, going up Kezey and that in the county or is that?
It's county.
It's county.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have any sway there or not, but.
What's the proposal fix?
Well, I think at the bare minimum, at least a sign that says limited, you know, visibility, you know, I've seen those. I think there's one on Scatburn Road that says that, you know.
I can, I can call County, Mike at County Roads and see if he has a sign that his guys can put in.
Is that for people coming down Kezey?
People coming, going outstate towards Kezey, right?
People coming off Stony Point, turning, going outstate toward town.
Yeah.
Turn up Kezey. Either way, it is pretty limited. People come around from up Kezey down and they're flying.
That's the signage.
I just got it because I'm like, well.
Maybe all three, all three directions?
Well, I mean, you, you can see people coming from the right because after they cut the trees there, of course, that might change after it starts growing up, but it's always been tricky going to the left, coming off Stony Point, turning into town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really can't hesitate there. And if somebody's speeding, things come up.
Yeah.
I mean, there's another one, maybe our limited law enforcement to sit just over the hill and nail a few people and maybe that'll help.
Okay.
I did see a thread on Facebook. I know we don't address Facebook, but I think it's a legitimate concern. Because I saw it when I was out doing the inventories on the sidewalks was handicap access. So that's probably something, again, back to the Public Works Committee with this fee and Lou money. I mean, that, that's something we really need to kind of wrap our head around because we don't want to end up like the state, getting sued because we don't have adequate ramps. So, and I don't know how you can do them everywhere, but at least we should be able to have some routes that these people can use without having to be in the street.
So do you know where that incident occurred? I didn't read it.
Yeah, I, I didn't, couldn't tell where she said she had her incident.
Okay.
She also said the homeowner came out to check on her. So if it's in front of her residence, it's not the city's sidewalk then to maintain, right?
Right, but that's why I'm wondering, like, where is it?
Right.
Because I don't know of any, aside from this right here and the one little lip in front of the old vape shop. I don't know any on the, they said the main drag had a whole bunch of problems. I was like, I don't know of that.
But then there's also people who say they use it every day and it's fine.
Yeah, but.
But on the, on the peripheral streets where we do have sidewalks and there again, I think it's, we've got an inventory now and we've got some of those areas should be on the map where sidewalks are deficient. And then we also, where we got deficiencies on curb outs, the ramps, so. And you know, maybe there's, there's an avenue to bring in some money for, you know, safe pathways. In fact, there is actually, I think, but I think I talked to you about that. We have to have it in our street plans.
Yeah.
So does the city on residential streets survey the sidewalks and notify homeowners if they need to be remedied? Because we used to get those letters in Portland for our sidewalks and we had to pay to fix them.
Yeah, so we haven't, because we have one code enforcement person, we haven't done that, but we do now have an inventory, so it'd be a lot easier to do. And just notice people that, you know.
Well, we've noticed some businesses and they never did fix it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe just an end date and a repercussion if it's a fine and then because we have to do it.
Be a hundred eighty dollars a day, I think, after thirty days or something.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
Oh.
The first ticket and five hundred dollars every day you don't do anything about it.
Typically the city goes and replaces it and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
But that's also bigger cities.
Right.
Right? I mean, we got like no concrete guy, so, but yeah, I can look into that. And we can, I think, I think it'd be good to have Public Works Committee chew on the options for, with that inventory.
Yeah, okay. One last thing, another concerned citizen, I think he talked to, I think it was a town over in the valley, I don't know, Hillsboro, Fort Scranton, somebody's got a skate park. And they mentioned that we need to make sure we have an inspection program and documentation that we are inspecting and doc, and documenting that it's in a safe condition because that's where you run into problems. If an unsafe condition develops, you know, we need to take action immediately.
Or flexibility.
Yeah, because the liability law doesn't cover us if there's negligence.
Right.
If we have a feature that fails and we don't address it, then it's negligent, so. But I think a real key point too was having this sheet of paper, they're doing that walkthrough. They're putting that check mark, putting the date in there, yes, I did physically go and look at this.
Yeah, well, we could easily line that inspection up with our ceiling twice a year.
I wonder if it needs to be more timely than that.
Do you think you inspect it more than twice a year?
Yeah, I'm thinking because, you know, you never know when something were to pop up.
But what do you mean pop up? Like the concrete's fitted or you checking like the rails?
Yeah, you know, a rail failure or who knows, you know, an act of vandalism that makes something sharp, you know, we should have caught. We might want to talk to one, some other entity that's doing this and see what their program is, what the.
Yeah, I would talk.
And was it Sam?
No.
So did this other person know of a city that had that program?
I could, I'll, I'll ask them and, and forward you the entity.
Okay, that'd be awesome because then I'm not just chasing it without calling and asking everyone with a skate park, do you have an inspection program?
We have a monthly program. We probably should just include the swing sets and everything, you know, he went through, checked everything, boom.
Yeah. Sorry Dale, go ahead.
And that person mentioned the same thing. It was all your kind of playground equipment, everything like that. I don't know what the court views as timely, so.
Right, okay.
Thank you Dale. Thank you. Anything else for the CA?
I just wanted to thank Josette and DC and all the volunteers for the work up there at the cemetery. It was nice. Josette does a lot behind the scenes on that and getting ready for it and volunteering, so, and so does her husband and, and Waylon and everybody to help put the polls up, Councilor Webb, and I'm missing people, George.
Yeah.
And who else?
Phil Hanson.
Yeah, and anyway.
Tom O'Donoghue.
It was just a good volunteer effort and then Mitch for getting it all mowed up up there and just looked good. Did get to set a couple of little flagpoles which were nice and light, but.
Those are gonna be a game changer for sure.
If we can lock them down.
Right, well, we talked about building a housing inside the shed on the wall so that they're not outside because that, they're just gonna get ripped off and scrapped. But yeah, or a pin or something that you could.
Yeah, for a small town, I think we do a good job up there at least trying to do something and show our respect to people that have died, defended our country, so. And Damian, I thought he did a good job, Damian Cox.
He's excited for the Legion to build up and take a more, bigger role.
Yeah, Sam Huff and everybody that came up there. It's just, yeah.
Okay.
Probably Ben, Ben was probably up there before.
And did all the mapping and all that for the Lions and, and we did get the people that were on Facebook that their veteran didn't have a flag. I did contact them behind the scenes and get their names.
And I did, I did want to mention the freewillers and, and.
Oh yeah, Pioneer.
Boy Scouts and Legions, they've taken care of that Pioneer. I actually went up there and walked around and, and it looked nice and it was respectful. They had flags out for the, for the veterans and stuff. And anyway, they do a lot of stuff up there and some of our cemetery committee was like, can you please make sure we thank them? Which we did and I'm doing it again now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the CA or items from the mayor or our councils? Kind of, I'll cover that in two categories.
If I went to Florida, it's hot, humid, but the coasts were nice and it's good to get back to Jerusalem, Brunnonia for a while, but the rain's starting to get old again. You can get down there, that Gulfside beaches are pretty nice.
Anybody else? Action item summary.
Okay, I just put that. Just have it.
I saw you right there.
I know, I just have like a paper with a million things written on it. What the heck? That is so weird. Oh, here it is, it's on the very bottom. Okay, staff's gonna check for the bonfire and remove any debris up by the water tank. We're gonna check the drinking fountain by the lake bathroom that it's working and if it needs new guts or what's got the holdup on that. Send out code letters to downtown that need to fix the weed growing. Check with County Roads if they have any signage they can do for the intersection of Kezey State and Stony Point. And then check with whoever Dale gives me the inspection information or other agencies and what they're gonna do with inspections. Am I missing anything?
Uh, Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, I have that. Yeah, respond to Jennifer.
So is that dead then now? Because it was three to two. So, is that dead then now? Because it was three to two on our opinion or we bringing back info?
Well, I'm thinking at this point she didn't specifically ask for something, so we're just going to say at this time the city can't help with this request. Not sure what the request exactly is. And then ask her for more information. Did she inquire with other agencies? Are there other cities that are contributing to her cause for Columbia County Habitat for Humanity? Because maybe that's something we could do budgetarily in the future. You know, ask her, kind of pick her brain on the things. You gave me some questions to ask.
She knows that another city contributed with ARBA funds, maybe that's...
How they did that, yeah.
She wouldn't be like, what's...
So, I have, did you receive funds from ARBA from other jurisdictions? And then ask if there's, oh, I'm looking for more info on the project moving forward. Like, what's your shortfall? What does the program contain? What does the person get left with? Kind of that kind of information because I think that's the missing component. If we knew, hey, the person's going to have a mortgage of this amount without help or a mortgage of this amount with help and just look into that stuff. But as of right now, we don't, three out of five of you guys said, unfortunately, we cannot help at this time. So, that will be our statement as of right now, but then I can ask her the other questions and get more information. How do other cities benefit you guys or do they do it in their budgets? Do they do a stipend every year that just pays in their skin in the game? You know, is the membership kind of pay-in thing? Like Columbia Economic Team, all the cities put in, right?
Or CC Rider.
Right, right. And I don't know how, I think they're probably a lot like community action teams where it's money from the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, but I don't know that for sure.
I'd like to know when they're going to break ground, but...
Well, I think they have to get a permit first. So, they're prob, I think I'm right in that they probably need to know what money they have and don't have before they apply for a permit, but that's just me.
Still trying to gather that up.
Right, before they'll know because then they'll have to get the loan assured ahead of time, right? I mean, most people don't, you have to know what you're going to end up having to take out on your mortgage, so.
Okay, so before I adjourn for the twentieth meeting, I'd like to see who, whose turn it is to pick Citizen of the Month and so...
I have to look.
They can get prepared for that, so, okay.
I'll send you an email.
I think it's Councilor Webb's turn.
You're right.
I think so.
He might be.
Wanted to confirm that.
Nope, the city council meeting is on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Tuesday, length of the holiday.
Okay. So, okay.
Yeah, because statewide is Juneteenth. It's on a Sunday, so it falls to the Monday.
Observed.
Yes.
Okay, I will adjourn this council meeting at eight thirteen PM. Meeting adjourned.